Are you ready, Mark? Bring the Board of Supervisors back to order. We are on Agenda Item 17C, which is Action for our Capital Improvement Program. Ms. Russell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And good afternoon. So this is our Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year 2022 budget. I also have a five-year capital plan that was late material. I apologize. Initially, it was part of the slideshow and we made some adjustments to the slideshow and it kind of fell off. So I apologize getting that out late. All right. So this, I'm going to go through real quick the funding sources and the capital requested. We'll look at the actual capital items. And I believe all the directors that have or elected officials that have capital requested are available for any questions that pop up. So please feel free to stop us and ask questions as I go. So the Capital Projects Fund is our largest fund that we fund our capital needs out of, or one-time needs. We primarily fund this through a transfer from the general fund. This year, we're recommending $10,495,553. That includes $1,962 from landfill. And the rest, the other 8.5 million is just for other capital needs. There's a 5-cent property tax that we get that goes directly into this fund. That is about $775,000 net of debt service. 411-211 can be spent on capital. There's about a little bit of interest earnings. And then there is a balance roll forward. We did not use as much break fix as we had saved away. So I've moved about 440,000 of it forward to be used on capital this year.
Carrie, doesn't some of that debt service come off in the next couple of years? Or am I not thinking correctly?
I think it's 2027.
Okay.
So I'll go through the attached list now, but in the attached list, you'll also see the break fix. So the break fix is set aside for IFC when emergencies come up during the year. It's usually between 3,000 and 400,000 is what I try to set aside for break fix. So this is a list of a summary of the capital needs. There is a bigger schedule that I gave as late material. And we can look at that at the end, but this is what we're recommending be funded this year. There's vehicle replacement program of $2.4 million. And I have all the vehicles listed out here that we can go through as well. Some small purchases. Due to that asset management program, we have multi-year HVAC and generator replacement of quite a lot of money. There's just several of them that need attention. And then there was other facilities, again, that's on this big list, of 1.5 million. This one is facility repairs. And then there's architectural design of 1.1 million, and that's for the new fire station, EOC, or Emergency Operations Center that we're looking at doing in the future. Not any big million-dollar items here. There's a little bit of IT needs. After the couple million dollars, we asked for an ERP a few years ago. This is pretty minimal for IT needs. The library is looking for a restroom remodel. My understanding is that is severely needed. Parks and Recreation, this is just partial, what we're paying out of the 210 Fund. You'll also see some Parks and Rec paid out of the Quality of Life Fund. This is why Pam was here this morning to help me with my slides. So I can keep up. So this is about $856,000. We're paying out of the two, out of the quality, out of the Capital Projects Fund. And there's going to be another $1.6 million in Quality of Life once we get to that slide. But here are the four centennial courts that we got so much public comment on. And here's the Sheriff's Department. Again, if you have questions, please stop me along the way. These are needs that the Sheriff's Department told us that they really needed. The dare truck is on there because this was initially a seized vehicle, so it was not purchased with city funds. And they're asking to replace that with city funds. The vehicle, 611, it's a motorcycle they want to retain. And so we want, you know, kind of it on record that they're not going to sell it. So it's going to be, it's going to add to the fleet. Or we can make a note and not add it to the fleet and make sure they do sell it. And then landfill. And these are, unfortunately, that vehicle replacement program is one big piece of equipment, that 1,150. And then they've got the landfill entrance reconstruction. So as I promised, here are the fleet purchases. This is just the ones from the capital, capital account. So that includes the landfill dozer and then the rest of the vehicles.
Gosh, that's like a fire truck. Wow.
I know.
1.1 million.
It is expensive. And then this is the rest of the funds, fleet that you'll see as we go through. And I'm not going through all the funds, but the ones with the major, major capital. Okay, so Carson City Transit, as we talked about, this is mostly funded by FTA funding and CARES Act funding. So they've asked for a couple new buses. And some bus stop improvements. The CARES Act funding is sitting in an undesignated capital account because we don't know if they're going to use it for capital or operations. So for the budget purposes, it's just undesignedated as capital. And once they determine how they're going to use it, they can move it.
Which we talked a little bit about this morning.
Yeah.
Concerning that there's the opportunity. So that's where they'll be making the operational adjustments. And they'll bring that back to us in final budget.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
The bus stop improvement, is that adding shelters or what?
I believe so.
Darren Schultz, Public Works Director, for the record. Yeah, so it's adding shelters as well as refurbishing existing shelters. And garbage cans, et cetera.
Thank you.
All right. Regional Transportation, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Supervisor Giomi.
This has nothing to do with budget, but just, and you probably get it at RTC, but can we just get a ridership summary at some point? Even, I don't know if you even have to make a presentation, just send it to us. I'd just like to see.
We can have Lucia send the data out to everyone.
Yeah, just like to see kind of the history of how it's gone over the last five years or something. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're onto the Regional Transportation Fund. And this fund is primarily funded through traffic, or I'm sorry, gas taxes. And we're looking at the district projects for the upcoming district. They've got $1.3 million saved for that, for those district projects. They have not nailed down and identified specific projects within the district yet, so that's kind of.
That's for District Four. District Three, we talked about this morning.
Okay.
It moves, it's always a year, like you said, for those that don't serve on RTC. We're always funding money for the next year, but bidding out the prior years so the work can be done when it's warm. So this is for Four, District Four.
Right. And then the Undesignated or Infrastructure Capital is 286,926. So that would also be available for district projects. But they've specifically set aside that 1.3 million for those district projects. Street Maintenance Fund, there's just a few pieces of equipment in here and a stump grinder. But it's funded by, it's funded by gas taxes and C taxes. So they have a little bit of money to do that. The Quality of Life Fund, this is the voter-approved special revenue fund. And so they have their three different departments, the Parks Maintenance, Parks Capital, and Open Space. And so that is the available funding for the different projects that they're doing here. I did mention that we're funding $1.6 million in capital from here. They do have Undesignated of only 245,000, and I believe that's only capital in Open Space. So they have a little wiggle room if something else pops up that they want to do. But these are the projects they're looking at. And then the Extraordinary Maintenance Fund. So the available funding looks pretty high. We usually only transfer that 5 cents that we set aside for property taxes, which was $733,000. However, last year, we had excess funding when we rolled forward the entire budget. And we put that extra funding, 262, no, 2,262? 2,636. We put that into this Extraordinary Maintenance Fund as well. So that's why there's a large dollar amount available. And that's helped us with our asset management plan to do some roofing projects that are very much needed, some HVAC generator, asphalt replacement, those types of projects. The Residential Construction Tax, this is also helping with some Parks and Rec projects. They're going to do the Ross Gold Park Shelter with 150,000 available there. And then the VNT Infrastructure Fund, this is paid for by an eighth of a cent sales tax. And this is according to an expenditure plan, so we have to spend it on the districts. So we, so we haven't, it's sitting in Transportation Infrastructure because like I said, we haven't nailed down those projects yet. But once we nail them down, we'll assign them a project number and. And then the Infrastructure Tax Fund, we talked about this earlier, this is also an eighth of a cent tax, and it's for those corridor projects. So this will be for, if I'm not mistaken, the William Street Corridor. Ambulance Fund has a little bit of equipment, defibrillators, that's paid for with that Medicaid reimbursement and user fees. And then here's the Utility Funds. We did take these to the UFOC on April 6th, and they did review the capital and approve it at that time. There's wastewater and water. And at this time, we're not, we're not issuing any bonds, so this is all from user fees that were able to do this capital, which is kind of amazing. And I'm very proud to say the Cemetery Fund is able to pay for a little bit of capital. We did reorganize this a few years ago. And, and so they have a little bit of savings and they're able to pay for some of their asset management plan improvements, which were the Cemetery Office and Shop. And then the Fleet Fund just has their, for radio replacements, the 154,855, which you guys have seen, it's been presented to this board, the radio program. So this is the five-year plan I was talking about. And as you guys asked me to do, I did identify the, the Asset Management Program assets. There's a column to the right there. So everything with AMP was part of the Asset Management Plan that we're looking at doing. The reason for the peach highlight is that's just the Extraordinary Maintenance Fund versus the Capital Fund. So another way that I had to break this out because the Asset Management Plan was extremely voluminous as far as different assets that need to be replaced. So you'll notice on the second page, kind of in the middle, there is a deferred maintenance per Asset Management Plan of 19,321,216. And that is, and going to end up rolling forward into '23 to be done. I know that what we presented to you, yeah, and I know that what we presented to you a few months ago was 21 million deferred, and that actually only counted fiscal year '20 and '21. So now that we're doing the budget for '22, it's all three of those years, which ended up being 26 or 27 million. So we are bringing that number down. I mean, it's 19 million, it still seems very big. But we're able to fund $7 million this year, and next year, there's only 4 million requests. So hopefully, we can, we can whittle this down in the next five years.
Well, it certainly, it took us a long time in the planning.
Yes.
And a long term that we put the nickel to it. I think that this board will hopefully continue it, but certainly, I think we worked hard in our prior boards to recognize we had to do dedicated funding, or it would always be the last choice.
Right.
Right? And so I really applaud that and hope that this board will support continuing the Asset Management Program because I think we've invested a lot in the process, but it's the only way we're going to maintain our assets and not lose all those dollars investment in that. Supervisor Giomi?
I just wanted to add, thank you, Carrie, for putting that, that tag there. And I guess just ask, in the Asset Management Program, as this stuff gets done, then we'll go back into that program and update this information, correct? So, so those, these presumably were, were red in, in the spreadsheet, now they ought to go to green, correct? So we'll see that in, in the program, correct? I mean, that's the plan.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. A little bit further down is Fire. And so in '23, we've got $10 million there. That's obviously the new fire station, EOC. And there's some TC tax bonding that becomes available in '23, so that's most likely going to be a bond. And I think the only thing other, or I wanted to point out also, Parks and Rec had their Asset Management Program reviewed. And I made sure I asked like three times, are we positive that there's no duplicates here? And there is no duplicates. And you know, obviously, Facilities deals with the roof and the facility, but the Parks and Rec deals more with the internals, you know, the surface of the MAC and, and refurbishing things as they go along. So there is no duplication. And here, I grouped the items that we're not able to fund by location. So you've got the Aquatic Facility, Senior Center MAC Building. And then below it are what we're able to fund. Initially, it was 8.5 million, I believe. And some of that's being paid for, for the Quality of Life Fund. Some of it was paid for with Residential Construction and then the 210 Fund. So we did, we did whittle that down a little bit as it's now 7.3 million, so. Or, excuse me. We did whittle that down. And I think that's all I had to point out unless you guys have any questions.
So is there any, for the board here, next time, maybe we'll have line numbers on this one too. But is there any department or item that you would like specifically called out to stay for discussion? Supervisor White?
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't interrupt your presentation because honestly, I have quite a few comments on Fleet Department.
Mr. White, may I, just for, for purposes of allowing staff to leave, so you want to talk about Fleet, is there any other items that anyone wants the staff to stay besides Fleet?
No, I'm, I'm good with just Fleet.
Everything else is, everybody's okay? I just want to make sure. So if Fleet can stay, the rest, thank you so very much. Supervisor White, Fleet Discussion, please.
Thank you. I put out a number of questions for about a dozen of these vehicles. And for me, there's apparently an overall difference in the idea of what makes for a replacement vehicle. For instance, if you look at, in Streets Department.
Do you bring up a Fleet, can you bring the Fleet spreadsheet up so that we're all on the?
1283.
Same page?
1283.
Okay.
I went past it. There it is.
The five-yard dump truck, unit number 6403. Looking at $270,000 to replace that vehicle that's 14 years old. First of all, it looks to me like you're only running that truck about 3,000 miles a year. So the overall question is, do you need it? And that question, if the answer to that question is yes, then with that level of, of mileage, I would, I would say that in, in this manual for determining when to replace a vehicle, I have to disagree with that manual and say that if, if those are the actually limited number of miles that that vehicle is going to see, based on my experience as 40 years as a mechanic in this realm, probably for around $50,000, you could put that vehicle back together for another 14 years and not spend that whole 270. So one is, I would substantially disagree with the idea that at 14 years, parts for that truck are hard to find. Why do, why do we not rebuild that vehicle for around $50,000 and go on down the road with it?
I was waiting because that wasn't one question. I wanted to get them all out.
I understand.
And I apologize because I probably won't answer all of them, so you'll have to, you'll have to review. So the, the program that we have within Fleet, and it's been, it's been discussed and reviewed when we had a previous Fleet audit, was, was trying to come up with vehicles, and it varies on their use of what is the, what is the sweet spot in terms of, of turning over a vehicle and getting rid of it and replacing it? And it varies. So it's, it's a very good question for you to pull this particular one out because it does, I do agree that it does look a little odd. There's some background to it that I would like to offer. So in 2006, the city purchased eight of these dump trucks all the same year. I was not here then. I don't, so I don't have the background on it, other than they must have got a great deal to do something like that, which happens from time to time. So we have a, a slug of, of dump trucks that were all purchased the same year. And, and just in terms of financial management, that's not a real good thing to continue forward because you're going to have to replace them all approximately the same time. So one of the things that we're trying to do here is every year, starting this year, was to start replacing those vehicles, one a year, for the next eight years. And by not waiting too long, your example of 14 more years, by not waiting too long, we have been, it's been recommended and the decision was made that when we take these vehicles at this level to auction, that you, you get a fair penny for it. You get a, you get a chunk of money that comes back because it still has that engine, as you know, a diesel motor will go, you know, another 200, 300,000 miles on it.
If you don't make 500, somebody screwed up.
Okay. So the idea is to, is to, to renew our fleet, but also not, you know, be able to get something back from the auction that can be returned to the program. And at the same time, try to get rid of this idea of, of eight vehicles all of the same year. And then the, the other thing that we're doing in terms of these vehicles is as years go on, the equipment becomes more, more technical, more things that you can do. So for instance, we have the, the new dump truck that we got a couple of years ago, we were able to put, for snow plowing purposes, we were able to put a wing plow onto that vehicle, and it could be wired up into the cab and it could be operated there. As these vehicles are older, they're, the components are separate, it's a, the, that wiring, that function is, it's a standalone operation. It doesn't incorporate into the operation of the vehicle. So it's, it works, but it's not as efficient for the driver in terms of operating that. So as the vehicle gets newer, a newer vehicle, those additional connections are much easier to make and to go forward. So the mileage is, there are all of our dump trucks, that's, that's going to be an average number of miles that we put on them per year, which isn't a ton. There is a lot of idle time, but we just don't, we don't get out on the highway and, and drive those trucks like, for instance, NDOT or, or somebody else in terms of a diesel motor. And then just if you're interested in how we use them, you know, when we had the big snowstorm this last winter, we had all of our snow plows, we, we were hot seeding them for 72 hours. So those vehicles never stopped. They just, we, we altered the, the drivers in and out. So it's important to us to have vehicles that don't break down, that are consistent, that we can put out on the street. So all of that together is how we came to this conclusion.
So, and, and I do agree, when you have a fleet that is going to come to the end of its life all at one time, that's, that's not a good thing. But again, you have eight of them. So if you, one or two a year, put 50 grand instead of 270, then you start getting that offset. Let's go over to page 1282, the Fire Department, Equipment 2225. Again, there's, there's another one that I wonder what the, the actual application of that vehicle is because it's only driving 3,500 miles a year. So do you really need it? And if you do, instead of spending $65,000 on a vehicle that's going to drive 3,000 miles a year, why don't we put 10 grand into that thing? And off we go. I mean, I get, I get the idea that, and I endorse it, that we don't want to be driving around a bunch of old junkers, partly because, you know, if we have operators that look over the fence and they're all driving nice trucks and the pay's the same, I'm going to go drive a nice truck. I, I get that, but $65,000 for a vehicle that's going 3,000 miles a year, I'm having trouble even justifying the existence of that vehicle. So do you have personnel on hand that can do this kind of work?
In terms of do the kind of work, to work on the vehicle?
No, what I'm saying is, put 10,000 into this. Put a, put a new engine in it, paint it, put upholstery in it, make the windows work good.
Yeah, that type of a, that type of a work, Supervisor White, we wouldn't, we would, you know, we're not equipped to do that full remodel on our vehicles. We just, we just don't have enough, we don't have enough mechanics to keep up to do, so we would, we would probably farm that out. But I will just answer this, and then we can, we can bring Fire up here if we want to. We do look at Fire Vehicles and Sheriff Vehicles, First Responder Vehicles, a little bit different. And in terms of the, in terms of the overall, the way Fleet approaches it, is that those... is that those, those are vehicles that you want every time, 100% of the time, when they turn that key, that that thing is going to fire and it's going to get them to that response where they need to go. So we do typically, those first responder vehicles, we do typically replace those a little more often. Now, it has been practiced for a vehicle such as this, that if it gets replaced out of fire or out of the sheriff and it's still got some use in it, we will kick it down to another department that if the chance is, it doesn't turn over the first time they need it, they're not going to a fire and it's okay, we can fix it. So we have done that in the past and obviously that would be our practice in the future. In terms of the day-to-day use of this vehicle, I would, I'll, I'll ask fire to answer that.
Okay. And while I have quite a number of those sort of questions, rather than bogging everybody down in that, let's go back to page 1283. Down at the bottom in the Water Department, the forklift. Yeah, I see that it's 30 years old, but it runs? One hour a week. So again, I'm back to, do you really need it? I mean, where I came up through the ranks, yeah, you want that extra forklift sitting over there in the corner. Can never have too many of those kind of pieces of equipment. But in my mind, you only need it one hour a week. Do you really need it? And it's, I can tell you, bring that forklift to my shop and I'll give you an almost brand-new forklift for about $15,000. Rebuild it. That's, that kind of equipment, bulldozers, motor graders, forklifts, putting a, a criteria of they're 10 years old, that really doesn't fit reality of the life of the vehicle. It really doesn't. And so I, I think this criteria manual needs to be revisited and I really have some angst on about a dozen of these vehicles slated for replacement. All basically the same comments on the three that I've made now.
I'll give you just a, a quick response on the forklift specifically. So this piece of equipment is up at the Quill Water Treatment Plant. It's the only forklift we have. And I would argue with you that it does not start once a week. We need it once a week, but it, it rarely starts when we need it. It's, it's in disrepair. So the problem is that once it's 30-plus years old, the, the parts, the, to, to keep it going, it's just, it, it gets to a point where it, it's just not practical. And, and these guys, when they need it and to move stuff around, it's not dependable. And then furthermore, it's a long ways from our Fleet shop in terms of, of getting it fixed. So this is one that it's, we, we waited 30 years to replace it specifically for the reasons that you offered here today. It fit that category and it wasn't needed in an emergency. It didn't, so we, we feel it is at the end of its life and it, it's got to be replaced.
So if, if I misspoke and said one time a week, when I ran that out, it's one hour per week, one hour per week. And I, I could not argue that maybe that forklift needs to be closer to home. So when it doesn't run and, and Quill should have something more reliable. But that number I gave you includes a full rebuild of hydraulics and a repower. So, and I did do a little research to get myself up to speed on, on what those prices are today. I mean, I've been out of the game for over 10 years. And so I did look at those numbers and I just don't see spending $40,000 on a, on a piece of equipment that's going to run one hour a week. So bring it closer to home and ship a better one over there. But I don't, I don't see spending $40,000.
Supervisor Jones?
Darren, let's go back to that 6403, the dump truck. You said that, how does it work? When we, do we trade it in or is it sold at an auction? Give me an idea of what, what can we expect?
All right. Yeah, so any, any vehicle on here that is set for replacement, it either, option A is it would, it would go down to another department or another division to replace something that they have that is older. That's option A. Or option B, it goes to the auction. And it's the, it's the common government auction that's done here twice a year in the area. Regional auction, we bring everything up there and it's, it's done online. And well, it is during COVID, it was done online, but it's online and in-person, that auction. Anything, any proceeds from that auction are brought back to the city and deposited.
Could you give me an idea of what, what it's worth at an auction?
I cannot. That's a good question and I should have the answer. Unfortunately, our, our, we just lost our Fleet manager and so we're, we're doing the best we can, but I don't have that answer. I apologize.
Sherry, are you able to tell us in the transactional area, what the last auction deposit was? Because we have an account where we receive those in, right?
Well, we split it up into whatever fund purchased.
The original asset?
The original. So depending on, yeah, I'd have to get the auction sheet, the invoice, and forward it to everybody because each vehicle, we get a different cost. And then we look back at where we purchased it and that's where it ends up going into the auction process or the sale of asset proceeds.
Maybe you can just share that. Pull the last one or something and share it with everyone so they understand, as you said, the process. Do, because that just then reinvest back to the fund in which it was purchased.
Right.
Gets the money back. So whatever, wherever the vehicle was purchased. Okay. Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, just, just a few comments. You know, we, the city and, and a previous board did a pretty extensive overhaul of our, our whole Fleet process. And it was done through the external auditor. I don't remember if it was our current auditor or the previous one.
Previous.
It was a previous auditor. So it was an audit item brought up by the Audit Committee for the very reasons that you were talking about because there was really no plan on when to sell vehicles, when to keep vehicles, you know. So, so the program that we have in front of us now is a board, essentially board-approved program for vehicle replacement that balances not only the needs of the city and the life of the vehicle, but also the trade-in value of given vehicles so that we are getting some money back and not running things into the ground and, and getting no money for them at the end. And that was, you know, I mean, I, I'm brushing over the surface of a multi-page document that, that the Fleet Department has been using to bring these items forward. Is, is there room for some adjustment? Probably. You know, I just, I don't think that we should be making adjustments on the fly to a policy or a program that a previous board approved. I wouldn't disagree that it might be time to re-review that. As far as the Fire Department vehicle goes, I can specifically address to that because I, I know why it's in here and why they're probably asking for something, if I'm not mistaken. This is the small Blazer. So in '04, '05, '06 or something, we got a donated vehicle for our Fire Prevention Inspector and Investigator. That vehicle had in excess of 150,000 miles. I think we got it from NV Energy or Sierra Pacific. That's what that person was using. The vehicle broke. I had no vehicle for the inspector at the time. I took a, a Fleet vehicle from City Hall that they weren't using, which was a car, which didn't work. And the city had a small Blazer that they had approval to purchase, which they did, assigned to the Fire Department, and that's what we used. In, in this case, I suspect that the chief is saying that, you know, the vehicle may have a life left on it and maybe it will be reassigned somewhere, but it doesn't fit the need. I took it at the time when I was the chief because it was either that or, or we wouldn't have had anything for this inspector. So that, that's how that particular one came to be. And my guess would be, they're saying that this vehicle doesn't suit the needs for what that inspector is doing. But that's, that's not for me to say, it's for them to say.
Thank you. If you'll discuss item number 2225, 49,753 miles, Blazer, why does that need to be replaced? Thank you.
Deputy Chief Aaron Lowe from Carson City Fire. So that vehicle, in addition to what you had mentioned, I did not know the backstory of that. The position has also been unfilled for quite some time and therefore no one was driving it. So now we do have an inspector. We filled that position and the miles will start adding to it. One of the things that we've worked with Fleet on was standardizing our, our fleet. So there's some consistencies in our ordering and both of the mechanics to understand what they're working on and I have to diversify what they're working on and also standardize what parts they keep on hand and have some unintended benefits of those types of things. So I'm, I'm not going to try to argue how to run a, a shop with you at all, but that was the justification for, for that vehicle. It is an anomaly in our fleet and it has not been driven because of lack of staffing. But you guys approved one, so we got one filled.
So I'm going to admit, it's pretty hard to understand that we're replacing a Blazer with only 49,000 miles on it. I mean, I, I don't think the general public would replace their Blazer. So you're not telling me it's not operational or that it does not fit the need of the inspector. Because if it didn't fit the need or it wasn't of appropriate size for equipment and things like that, then, then I understand it. But...
Well, that, that's what I'm saying.
Right, if it was that, right.
Well, that's what it was at the time I took it. I, I was given a choice. Either you don't get a vehicle or you get this vehicle. And so at the time, as a fire chief, I'm either going to have my inspector walk the calls, ride a bicycle, or take the Blazette. And I, I chose to take this little Blazette. It, it's a tiny vehicle. And as a fire investigator, you can't fit your gear in, you can't fit your PPE in it. If, if that's what it still is.
Okay, because that's not what he, that's what I'm trying to ascertain. You did not indicate that the vehicle was not of sufficient size to handle the, the job of the investigator because it's two vastly different things. One, I want to normalize my fleet or standardize my parts. Well, then I do that when the vehicle's kaput. If it's, doesn't fit the job or the tasks that you need to do, I need to understand what you're asking for on this vehicle and what's the primary driver? What, what's making you ask for it?
And my apologies, I was just adding on to what Supervisor Giomi said. It does not meet the needs of, of the inspector and, and as you mentioned. So in addition to that, I was trying to give you more detail of what we were trying to do. So that the inspector does not, it needs a bigger vehicle and, and all the others do have a larger vehicle for their equipment.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. And, and that, that drives to the point of a little bit off topic, but I'll be brief. The manual for the criteria to replace never says anything about, there's, there's a better purpose for it somewhere else, right? Every one of my questions, some of them were multiple questions, but they had in there, what's the problem with this unit? Never once was a problem identified. Simply referred to the criteria manual, which frankly, in my mind, needs to be revisited. So...
I think we can do two things here today. We can, under a different agenda item, we can request that the manual come back for review and then move forward with this item. And, and then if there's policy directions that are necessary for the future on the documentation or the way we do Fleet vehicles, we can bring that back to a future agenda item.
Yes.
Okay.
At the end of this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So do I see any other questions? Nope. With that, I'll take a motion on the capital, item 17C. Who do you want to make a motion? Supervisor, oh, go ahead.
Since I made the biggest motion, I'll try to make the, the motion.
1272.
Even though I, I don't like a good bit of this Fleet business, I'll go ahead and make the, the motion. Let's see, yeah, I have the right one. I move to approve the proposed Carson City CIP for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and direct staff to return to this board with the fiscal year 2022 Carson City final budget, incorporating the approved CIP for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled for May 20, 2021.
Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you all. Again, I know this is a lot of work. But we're moving right along. Okay. So now we are going to recess as the Board of Supervisors and I'm going to call to order the redevelopment authority. Ms. Rowley, may I have a roll call for the redevelopment authority, please?
Sure, Chairperson Bagwell.
Present.
Vice Chair Giomi. Member Jones. Member Schute.
Here.
Member White. The quorum is present.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 20, which is public comment. Do we have anyone on the line for public comment to the redevelopment authority?
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, so you no public comment. We'll move on to item 21, approval of the minutes. Does everyone had a chance? I'll take a motion. Supervisor Giomi?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 18, 2021 redevelopment authority.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Why isn't it? Let me get there. Okay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item 22A. Let's get through that budget. Ms. Russell?
Thank you again. Madam.
Sure.
I am sorry, I promise, this is my last item. So again, Sherry Russell, Chief Financial Officer for the record. This is for the Redevelopment Agency Fiscal Year 22 tentative budget. This was filed with the Department of Taxation on, well, it's due today, but we did file it earlier this week. This should say fiscal year 22 highlights, excuse me, it still says 21. The assessed valuation increased for the redevelopment area 10.7%. So the property tax caps are 3% and 3.7% for commercial, 3% for residential, same as the city caps. We're projecting $115,000, $116,000 increase of 4.3%. Personnel had very minimal changes. It looks like a big percentage, but again, they've had some savings this year, termination savings this year. So it looks bigger, but really it's the same positions we're budgeting for. And then services and supplies had a slight increase. Basically, the VNT Arch Conceptual Plan that was approved by the board. And then there's some capital included in there as well. So this is that pretty slide that I love.
Me too.
The FTEs have not changed in this fund. And so I always show this slide during redevelopment. It breaks the redevelopment fund down by district. And the most important part of this slide is this second slide here where I show how much we spent in which district and who subsidizing who. And so last year, the downtown was subsidizing, or excuse me, South Carson Street was subsidizing downtown. This year, downtown subsidizing South Carson Street. So we really try to be even in what we spend in each district. It's really hard, but we do try to even it out. Some years we spend more than one, then the next year it reverses.
But there is absolutely no requirement to spend by the district. I need to, it's not a policy or a requirement.
No, it's not.
We just try to do it.
We just try to be fair to those in each district.
If there's a good project, we want to fund it.
Absolutely. We just try to be fair to the districts that are paying the fees. Okay, so this is the five-year projection of the redevelopment. I increased property taxes by 4% or 4.5%. I tried to keep it consistent with the city budget. And there's some interest revenue and then the charges for services is the Christmas ornament. And it looks like in that last year, there's an extra dollar. So I copied a cell forward. And then the bottom of this slide is really more, more operational dollars. There's the salaries and benefits and then the services and supplies. And then there's the few events that we fund every year. Nevada Day, Farmers Market, Christmas tree lighting. Then there's the... Then there's the sales tax incentives for the various businesses that we have agreements with. And here is the final expenditures, which are the projects and the undesignated balances, kind of what's remaining at the end of the day.
Thank you. Do I have any questions on the redevelopment budget? I don't, oh, I thought you were off.
I am done, this is the same thing.
Yes. Supervisor White.
Yeah, you know, in our February meeting, we moved, we voted to move the shade structure money, the $86,000 into the sidewalk and the ADA improvements. And at that point, that budget in February showed $550,000 setting in the sidewalk improvements. Move the 86 into that, it should be $636,750. But on this line, on page 1307, sidewalk and ADA improvements only show $186,750. So I've asked a few questions about that and the responses that I've received, there's some questions as to why, why does that not say $636,750?
So what happened is the $550,000 that was set aside for sidewalks and the underground power of $100,000 were combined into the Curry Street project. It's easier for Public Works to go out to bid if they've got one project to bid it under. And then any other sidewalks, I think they had some savings also on the east-west transmission main of $100,000. So that $100,000 plus the $86,000 were combined and those will be spent on other sidewalk and ADA improvements.
So it's just lumped differently than we saw it as the line item detail in February versus the labeling?
Yeah, and according to Public Works, it's easier to bid a project, all is one, instead of bidding the underground powers one. You get a synergy of, you know, expenses.
So though, to answer Mr. White, the money will be spent as we allocated in February.
Yes, that Curry Street project is mostly, is almost all sidewalks, is from what I understand.
So I have a little trouble doing it that way because that's not something that the public in general, or even ourselves, can decipher. And we told the public that we were going to spend $636,750 on sidewalks. That should be something made easy for the public to find, as well as the undergrounding money. That's, I have a real problem with the way this has been rearranged, to be perfectly honest with you. And I don't really want to throw anybody under the bus, but the answers that I got back by email is pointing fingers at other people as to why it's been done that way. So...
So Ms. Russell, when you bring the final budget back, would you please look at the label for the 2021 Curry Street project and consider, please, putting the parentheses in there indicating that that's our sidewalk to properly display to the public that that's the February sidewalk money? I think it is easier when we talk to people out on the street that we're going to do something, that they can find the project. So if you could just look for a label update, I would really appreciate.
Yeah, this is a spreadsheet, so I can spread them out in the future and just put the same project number out to the side.
Sub, right.
Can I clarify things?
Absolutely, Lee. Mr. Plummel?
Sorry, I appreciate Supervisor White's concern. So the $550,000, Sherri, do you have the slide up that shows those, the 2021 Curry Street project and then the sidewalk and ADA improvements lines?
Yes.
Yes, so it was presented and I have the information and I'm sorry for any miscommunication at the February meeting, but it's reflected as it was presented. The 2021 Curry Street project, the $100,000 for undergrounding that was added to that was clearly represented as being for that project. There's also funds in FY '21 that's being combined with that. That's something that was approved a couple of years ago. So that $650,000 is specifically for that one project. It's not for general downtown streets and sidewalks. The $86,750 was combined with a carryforward 100 for general sidewalk and ADA improvements. That's right below there. And that's where it was combined with because that's the general unassigned projects at this point. And I would also note that looking down below there, there's a million dollars in undesignedated. And the plan for Public Works is to bring forward a priority list for general sidewalk and ADA improvements in the redevelopment area for that $186,000 and possibly for you to allocate more of those funds towards general sidewalk and ADA improvement projects. So I think it is categorized properly as shown there. We have a specific project and then we have the general sidewalk and ADA improvements line.
But the $650 in this Curry Street includes sidewalks. All we're saying is put a parenthesis, it does not include any sidewalks.
It includes the additional $100,000 that was added for undergrounding power. But that line, that is not a new amount. That was in, you know, looking that, as we're looking forward in that budget, that was something that was shown as being included for this year in order to fund that project specifically.
Well, I think for me, based on our February promise to the residents of this city, I need to see a pretty detailed accounting of $636,750 worth of sidewalk projects. Because...
And if you want, and if the board chooses to do that, you could add that fund. You could direct us to move money from that $1 million undesignedated into that sidewalk and ADA improvement project. Because I agree, as submitted to you, only $186,000 is assigned to that. And you would have to move some from undesignedated into that $186 to add more, if that's how much you wanted to spend on that.
Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean that I'm objecting to spending sidewalk money on the Curry Street project. But this really does not reflect what we said we wanted to do in February.
I think again, when it comes back for final budget, we can refer back to February and make sure we're aligned. I'm not, if it's a labeling issue, we'll just take care of things in the final budget, like you said, and we can reflect it and deal with it at that time. Mr. Stuckey, when do you think the Public Works staff will be coming back with the sidewalk plan or needs? Because I think we were even talking about potential, excuse me, multi-years. But when do you think that will be coming back to us?
Yeah, Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record, thanks for the question. Staff is currently working on this as we speak, as far as evaluating what we can do with that money. I'm actually working with Lucian Molyneux, and we'll present this all back to you probably in a month, maybe May or June, depending on timing. But we're actually looking at ways to leverage federal transit dollars and replace sidewalks near bus stops that are much needed. So leverage this $186 to a much bigger project and get a lot more sidewalk done. So we're looking into options there, which I think is a great, could be a great solution for a lot of, to replace much-needed sidewalk down there. I do want to just comment on kind of the natural progression of a Public Works project and how we've used this sidewalk improvement money, excuse me, in the past. For example, the Telegraph Street project that we just completed last year from Carson Street to Plaza Street, that had about $200,000 of sidewalk improvement money from redevelopment. But we also leveraged that money and we replaced water, we replaced sewer, we put RTC money into that project. So it became a $700,000 where $200,000 of it was that sidewalk project. So we couldn't really call the project sidewalk project. We called it Telegraph Improvement Project, but the $200,000 was used for sidewalk improvements. So you can see how, I get the confusion. I think we can, as Mayor Bagwell mentioned, I think we can do a better job of labeling that in the future, but that's just an example. We're not trying to hide things here. It's just, we're trying to make scale-up projects to get a lot more things done with them. So just wanted to give that example.
Please don't take my comments as inferring that you're trying to hide anything. It's just, that's not the numbers we said in February.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
Okay, well, now I'm confused. So, Lee, I don't recall the February board meeting, and this could be just my lack of brain power, saying that we had $550,000 specifically dedicated to sidewalks. And I thought I heard you say that that's not what it said.
The $550,000 was already in there. It was planned with the prior year's budget in the five-year projection and it's already been, and Mr. Stuckey's there. Maybe he could tell you where they are in the process, but I think if they haven't already bid the project, they're pretty close to bidding it and that funding is allocated specifically for that one project. And then there's another light item that's an additional that for any other redevelopment projects, I'm sorry, sidewalk and ADA projects in general within the redevelopment area.
No, I got that. I guess what I'm saying is Supervisor White said that there was $550,000 set aside in the February meeting for sidewalk improvements. And I, I don't recall that. I specifically recall the $86... I specifically recall the $86...
$550,000...
Sorry, Lee, go ahead.
$550,000 was shown on the spreadsheet to the Board of Supervisors for the down, it said downtown sidewalks improvements with the footnote that, but it was specifically allocated to this Curry Street project. And it has been in combination with over a million dollars from FY 2021.
Okay, so in February, all you've done then is take the $550 plus $100,000 carryover and now just change the name of it. It's still the same thing it was.
But it's all lumped as Curry Street project.
But it's all lumped as Curry Street. Because I, you know, I...
No.
I really don't think it's, Lee, if I may, I think this can be resolved simply within the motion that we can accept this budget and we will ensure we have proper alignment with the February minutes and just move on.
I'm going to need it broken out because I'm...
That's what I mean, we can align it with the February.
At this point, I don't get it.
Right.
It wasn't presented in February as the downtown sidewalks being the Curry Street project. And in fact, there was quite a discussion that we wanted that sidewalk money spent throughout the redevelopment area with the addition of the $86,750. That's what was talked about in the February meeting. And now we find out that $550 was Curry Street project when Curry Street was never mentioned in February.
I think it said downtown. I think we can just resolve this, we can go back to the February minutes and we will align this in the final budget to either appropriately label or distribute as committed to the public. I think we can, we're not going to be able to resolve that sitting here without pulling the minutes for the February meeting, but the staff will understand the directive when we bring it back so that it's clear. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll take a motion to approve this and ask, with the condition that staff align the February, you know, just take a look for the final budget with the February minutes. Supervisor Giomi, are you making the motion? Oh, it's your purple, okay. Supervisor White?
I'll make the motion as Supervisor, or Mayor Bagwell explained the motion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the redevelopment budget as presented with the potential for final budget alignment pursuant to the February minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I say thank you very much and you guys had a very rough day? I'm glad it's almost over.
Well, yeah, are you like done? We gotta, we gotta figure something out to make you stay. This isn't fair. Okay, we're moving on to item 23, final public comment for the redevelopment authority. Do we have any comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you so much. Okay, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the redevelopment authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We are on item number 26A. This is a second reading for bill number 106, the ordinance repealing the shade tree council. Do I have any questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion.
I move to adopt on second reading, bill number 106, ordinance number 2021-6.
Sir, a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
I'm running out of air.
Okay. Agenda item 26B is discussion and possible action on legislative activity. Ms. Paulson?
Good afternoon.
Ooh, nice to hear from you today.
Yeah. This, the only bill we have today is SB 283 and that authorizes PACE projects, which are property assessed clean energy projects in Nevada. Local assessment, these are local assessment districts that finance private projects, including energy efficiency, renewable energy and water efficiency projects, where all property owners are voluntarily assessed. The project is financed by the assessments on the properties. Counties may issue bonds to finance a portion of the project and liens can be placed on the properties. NACO is in opposition of this bill. However, in looking at it, it looks like the bill is enabling. There's quite a bit of discussion at the NACO meeting last week on this and some of the concerns was, how does the special district get its funding? There isn't any language that addresses a revenue source to cover the administrative costs of assessing, recording and assigning liens on the property, let alone the ongoing staffing and auditing cost and releasing of liens. It would be good if a portion of the special assessment came back to the district to cover these costs. Right now, it looks like all of the assessment is signed over to the private party. Another concern in section 16 allows them to assign these loans up to 90% of the market value of the property. And this, the concerns with this is that it would lead to a situation where the taxes owed, the assessments owed and the general property taxes owed would exceed the value of the property. So the bill is an expansion of current law. It adds resiliency projects and water efficiency improvement projects. It includes a super priority lien status given to the capital providers, giving them, giving some power to the private holders that is normally reserved for the county or the government, the liens on, the regular property taxes that we levy. Let's see. There was some amendments proposed. The bill requires, initially, the capital provider was to execute and record an assessment lien on the real property and sets forth a priority of such a lien and now it's the municipality that does that. Section 19 provides that a municipal, this is in the proposed amendment, provides that a municipality, including officers and employees, are not liable for actions taken pursuant to this act, provides that the municipality shall not pledge its full faith and credit for an assessment and further provides that a municipality may charge a fee to offset the costs of the administration of the district. And then lastly, another part of the amendment, instead of the 90% of, that they're allowed to assess, the amount of the assessment lien for qualified improvement shall not exceed 25% of the fair market value of the property rather than the 90% that was initially proposed. And for new construction or a gut rehabilitation, it shall not exceed 35% of the fair market value. So this would alleviate some of the concerns that the property values would fall below. Uh so this would alleviate some of the concerns that the property values would fall below uh the amount that the, of taxes that are owed. And Supervisor Giomi, do you, there was a lot of opposition.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest opposition at the NACO Legislative Committee meeting was the, the market value concern, uh I mean, all the things you brought up, but the market val, the ninety percent market value concern because a lot of properties are already running into this in some jurisdictions where the property has a lien placed on the property already because of, of back taxes or other government liens that make the lien more than the value of the property. And so there's these orphaned properties that, that I, I, I don't, it's going to take the legislature to to clear up. They're, they're just going to sit there and be orphaned and, and continue to build up fines. So that was one. So amending that down to twenty-five percent was good. Um the other one that I, it concerns me more than anything else is giving um, you know, a government super priority lien status um that that is equal to the county's lien status to a private entity. Um that, that to me is probably the most alarming part because right now, we, local governments have priority status on any liens placed on properties. And so if you adjudicate that property or forced to sell that property, the local government and thereby the, the whole of the taxpayers get made whole first. Um in this case, it, it, there would be some question that maybe even a private entity could be, could top that. And so that was the biggest concern I have. Um, you know, I'll, I'll hop on my soapbox again for just a second. I, I don't think that the idea behind what they're trying to do is bad, but this goes back to that comment where you're, you're trying to pass some very complicated legislation and ram it through in a really short amount of time without a lot of smart people getting their eyes on it and trying to, to have an understanding of what it means and how we can make it better. Um in this case, my recommendation would be that we follow NACO's lead. Um and if, if the amendments, you know, they agree, the amendments are sufficient to um to, to, to support it or even go neutral, then I would follow that lead. Um, I, I don't know that, that um, they have a staff that really looks into this stuff. So that would be my recommendation.
So to, to understand correctly, then, we, we as this board would not take a formal action and we'd just allow the city manager to continue with the NACO position?
That, that's what I would recommend.
Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, Captain.
You've got your, the city manager has her marching orders. Okay, that, we have no other items under twenty-six B? And we'll move on to, we're doing it. We're almost there, you guys. Um agenda item twenty-seven, do we have future agenda items? We already discussed one earlier. We'd like to look at the uh fleet uh procedure, policy manual. Do we have anyone else want anything else for the future?
I, I have another one.
Maybe? Go ahead.
Um, it kind of uh catapulting off of that, revisiting the, the fleet replacement manual, I believe that with six hundred and eighty-seven vehicles rolling stock in our fleet in Carson City, we need to consider making that a department on its own and not be underneath Public Works. Um that is a, that is a wholly complete and separate world from the general considerations of Public Works. I have seen in multiple jurisdictions, along with the one that I worked in, housing fleet under, uh as, as a secondary part of a division, that that's not their primary activity is problematic because just like we talk about, um parks is always the first one to get robbed. Nobody pays any attention to fleet because they don't know anything about it, they don't want to deal with it, they've been hung with it. I think our fleet in Carson City is big enough to be their own department and we need to start looking into how we can make that happen.
Uh I'll just, just in general, comment, we have had two audits in fleet and that has never been a recommendation that came from that. And it certainly, I'm not saying we could never look at that, but.
Well, and.
Understand your request.
And in response to that, as uh Mr. Schultz said, this fleet replacement criteria was built by an outside auditor who has zero experience in fleet operations and I can tell you by reading that, they missed the mark by a long ways.
Okay. Um, do we have any other items that anyone would like to see for the future? Nope? Okay. Uh any status review of projects or anything out there that we need to know about, Ms. Paulson?
Nope.
Wow. Any, uh, board members have anything they want to share with the rest of the board? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, the um Carson Water Sub Conservancy District, uh it's a little preliminary, but they um recently have been in communications with the Forest Service over water rights that they own at Lost Lakes, which is in Alpine County. And um the Carson City buys a hundred acre feet of Lost Lake water and I think that may be the full allocation that the CWSD owns. Um but again, this is very preliminary, but the Forest Service mentioned to CWSD that the permit fee which, which the water district has been paying has been about, I'm, don't hold me to the exact number, say eighty-five dollars a year, and they're going to look at charging the district almost six thousand dollars a year going forward for that and hold them responsible for the dam um that's there. So um in, in, in further discussion, it looks like, and, and again, the, I'm going to miss this next uh water board meeting, so Lisa will have to carry the banner, but um uh the, it, it looks like the water district won't have to pay that high a fee if the water is not sold by the water district. So they sell it to the city. If, if they don't sell it to the city or give it to the city or give it to any of the water purveyors in the, in the watershed, then that probably doesn't come into play. But again, a lot of that is preliminary and um we'll find out more. And I, I only mention it because even if the city doesn't, you know, get the opportunity to buy the hundred acre feet, I think this year we used thirty or forty acre feet. Um we, we do have other sources, it's just, you know, it, it's just something to keep in the back of our minds, so.
Anyone have anything else to share? Anything from the city manager's office? We're good? Okay, going. I'm not going to ask anymore, we're going. Um, we're then on final public comment. Do we have any?
There's no public comment at this time.
Yeah, we warmed down today. Okay, then if there's no objection, ta-da, we're adjourned. Thank you all for a very good meeting today.